Okay, so we will call this Committee of the Whole meeting to order. We, several, couple meetings ago, had an ordinance placed into the Committee of the Whole, which was an ordinance setting the salary ranges for the fire chief and chief of police. And so we had the first reading, and then afterwards it was placed into Committee of the Whole. So I don't know where you want to start the discussion. Assistant Chief McCabe is here, if you want to hear from him, or... I can tell you that I did speak with the mayor briefly today to find the origin of this, and it began in the mayor's office, or the Safety Service Director's office, and then, as well as, we have this salary ranges that we received. I think that Kelly Babcock from Clements Nelson had passed out. And so that was the origin of the ordinance, and we'll go from there. Yes, Mr. Thompson?
Yeah, I believe I'm the one who said...
You did make the motion.
...who wanted to make the motion. And it was because I wanted the information that has been provided by Ms. Babcock here, which was local salary ranges, as well as other cities of similar size salary ranges. So really, the whole point for me to do this was because I just wanted more of this information, and so we've since gotten this. I'm happy to discuss, but this is what I wanted.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wish I could take credit, but I didn't. Kelly Babcock did all the work, so... I also, because Assistant Chief McCabe expressed some concern about the, some of the provisions in the ordinance, I also checked with the mayor's office, and I was told that the rationale behind the longevity pay and all the other stuff being in line with APSME Local 3278 is because other people in the administration are people who are considered part of management. So when there is a health commissioner, the safety service director, all the appointed people, the director of public works, all of those people who are part of management by city ordinance receive the same benefits as APSME 3278. And that was the rationale behind putting that in this ordinance, because they considered the fire chief and chief of police to be part of management, and so they wanted to make it consistent across the city. I also asked about your concern about if you started at the bottom, that you would be making less pay than the assistant chief, and was told that by civil service law, rank equals money. And so if you are a rank above someone else, by civil service law, you have to make more money. And so it would be, if you're, if the assistant chief made more than the minimum, then you could come to council and get more than the minimum. It would have to be at least more than the assistant chief made, and how much of a percentage or amount or percentage or whatever would be up to council. Assistant Chief McCabe, did you, do you want to come up here for a minute?
Sure.
I thought you said right now, it's like 5% or it's a percentage right now. I'm just trying to give as much information as I can for council to be able to consider this ordinance.
So currently, the percentage difference between the assistant chief and the chief is a 12%.
12%.
If you look at the salary structure from assistant chief up, it is right on the money, 12%. That's pretty typical when you're looking at a union's positions to management. And I guess my main concern with, I understand the thought process on the benefit package and where you structure that, but you also have to take into account, there's certain language provisions within a contract that are beneficial to someone who is setting their pension. Pension is typically just a public service issue, but there are ways... I have sold my holidays for the last five, 10 years, and I'm here every holiday. Or I move a vacation day into those days. And when I do that, that's pension-contributable. Not only do I pay that pension portion of it, so it's the city. So there is some expense to that. But then I'm also here, working. And that concerns me, because for me, looking at taking the next step in my career journey, not knowing what the ranges are, and then having to have a conversation, you know, once the civil service test is given, I essentially have 10 days to decide if I want the job. And if council doesn't meet, and then I'm kind of on a limb here, I'm just rolling the dice. You know, I totally understand having something set in stone. I mean, the account of, the account, or the report on accounting methods that the state auditors issued out actually recommended that you renegotiate the current chief's contracts, if you read that report. When it comes down to theirs, it said actually renew those contracts. But I understand the thought process, and I'm not terribly opposed to having set, I mean, that's actually helpful. But what you need to keep in mind is that only a certain group of firemen will be eligible for the chief's test. If you don't make it commensurate with the position, those people may decline, and then it will drop. It's not like the city can hire from outside. So you could have, you could essentially end up with a five-year fireman taking the chief's test. And that should be concerning. I think, I think once you look at the total compensation packages, and, you know, certain language included would probably be helpful. Because for me, I've got five more years before I go into the drop, and I'm looking at doing 13 more full years here of service. And with the fire chief leaving this year, you know, who knows what will happen? But, and I'm glad this is coming out now, way before the test. So that certainly will give me some pause into thinking about taking the examination. I know there's been some other discussion within the fire department about that, but the ordinance, as it sat with a lot of variables in it, it was pretty much thinking, and thank you for the explanation from civil service, because that makes a difference, but there's a lot of guys that would probably decline taking the position because of that. The pension portion is very important, so I think that really needs to be looked at, and that can be accomplished with some language additions. You know, just having the ability to sell those days is important. Longevity is, it's a minute issue, you know. I think the only thing to you might want to consider is that the holiday structure within the fire department, the days celebrated as holidays is different than what the city is. So you would have days where the chief is not there, but it's not a celebrated holiday within the fire department, it's a normal business day, so... And that's minor. But anybody have any questions that I can answer?
And then, another thing that I forgot to mention was that in the past, people who became chief just came in and took the highest salary of the chief who was going out. They may have, you know, 10 or 15 years in that position and didn't feel that it was, you know...
Yeah.
That was another consideration behind this, behind the...
Our previous chief had served for...
How long was he chief?
Seventeen years, as a fire chief, at least. So we didn't really have that turnover. Typically, we used to see turnover, every three years we'd have a new chief. And so there really wasn't that big of a deal. Now, I know that Chief Goodman served his last probably 10 years without a contract, so it was just stagnant. And that, it was pretty much just based on 12%, 12% above the assistant chief's pay. But thank you for your time, let me address you on this issue. I think it's important, and I think what you're, what you're looking at is the right path. I'm just, I'm hopeful that we'll potentially have some ability to work around some of that language.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that everybody knew what I knew.
Yep, appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, will you take questions?
Oh, no, I don't have a question for you.
Oh, okay. You do?
Oh, you do.
Okay. Ms. Stevenson?
Thank you, Madam President. I have a handful of questions. A couple of times you've mentioned, like, recommendations or suggested language. I just wanted to dive into that a little bit, to understand your perspective. Do you have any concerns regarding how experience is currently described in terms of who is qualified to be the fire chief?
Well, Norwood is a statutory city, so they fall under the Ohio-Vice-Codin in terms of hiring. And the civil service laws here in Norwood make it very specific. You have to be either the assistant chief, or been a line captain, or staff captain for at least a year. This job has changed immensely, just in the last 10 years I've been here, but the amount of requirements and knowledge, it used to be, we're the fire department, and then we're the fire department doing EMS, and then we're fire department and EMS and doing hazmat. And right now, we're an all hazards department. So there's a number of educational requirements that are put forth on us, just for every year we have to do, or every three years for our certifications. And then, you know, education is expensive. And so when you look at it, is, does the city invest in its employees to educate them? Our union has fought for a long time to get some educational benefits, I guess, where we can, we can get additional training. I have a pretty thick training file. I think it's served us well in the past. I don't know what requirements you could actually put in. I think it was pretty generic in the ordinance that, you know, depending on qualifications, well, I would like to see it set forth as, these are the qualifications we want, but then you have to parlay them to what can we legally require from civil service.
Thank you, that's helpful. You mentioned somewhere in what you were sharing that, you know, it's possible we could end up with a fire chief that only had five years of experience, so I was interested in your perspective on what's currently required. So thanks for sharing that. The piece about someone having less experience also caused me to wonder, how do you think that would be received? If we ended up in a place where the fire chief had less experience, you used the five, I'll stick with five, do you think that the employees would support that person?
So let me say first that that scenario is probably a worst-case scenario. However, from a perspective, I don't think many people understand that a fire chief can be held personally responsible for anything within the fire department's happenings. So, and it's not like, you know, the fireworks director can get sued personally, he can get held through the city, or, but that's a statutory thing within the state of Ohio. The fire chief's going to be held personally responsible. So there comes a lot, a huge weight of responsibility. Would they be received? Well, you know, we're a small department, we've got a pretty tight group of guys. I can't reasonably say that you'd have a five-year person in here that understands everything that's needed to manage that department. I mean, you're talking about a large, large budget within the city that has to be effectively, you know, the taxpayers' money has to be looked over, and we have to make sure that we're providing the most efficient and most professional and best service we possibly can with the money that we're given. Would a five-year guy be able to handle that? I would suggest no. I think in terms of just the administrative experience, I was fortunate when I promoted lieutenant, and I came in the fire department in 2000, and I promoted the lieutenant in 2008, so it was pretty quick. And the fire chief at the time gave me a lot of administrative duties, and really prepared me for this position especially. But not everyone gets that. You know, it's just a matter of how the jobs within the firehouse are delineated out to the staff, and you typically don't want line personnel doing administrative work, but it was a good experience for me. You know, I was one of the key people that managed our radio transfer system from the Cincinnati backbone, which is basically, we were on Cincinnati's system into Marx. So I was, I got to manage a half a million dollar project with one of the police officers. That's, you don't get to do that. And I've been involved in a lot of the projects, managed, you know, 3-point-something million dollars in grant work, and that's experience you just don't get being a firefighter paramedic.
Thank you. I have two more questions.
Go ahead.
You mentioned recommended language, or like, this could be tweaked, that kind of thing. Are you making recommendations to the administration that kind of nail down what that, I don't know exactly what you mean, so I'm just trying to make sure we capture what you're sharing?
I don't know that it's my place to make recommendations. I just want my opinion to be on the record.
Okay.
We, you know, the job as a fireman essentially takes 10 years off your life. You can look at the standards. And so retirement's really important, and we try to do a really good job of planning for that, so we can enjoy it. And looking at an ordinance setting a pay where I would negatively impact my pension for a job that requires additional responsibilities and headaches, that doesn't make sense. You know, the position, or the pay should be commensurate with the position, and the city asks a lot of this fire chief, as it should. You know, looking at those ranges, right, there's a lot, there's a lot of variables you can look into these ranges, you know, what departments have part-time people, what departments have all career staff. Obviously, we're in a fiscal situation right now as well, but, you know, I would just, you want your employees to feel valued, you want your employees to feel like they've been listened to, and you want them to be, have a feeling of they've done a good job and earned a nice retirement.
Yes, Mr. Thompson?
I keep coming back to this in my head, and I hope people here take this the right way. I think that the range is a fair range based on the data that I've seen. It, I say that it's a fair range, and I say that it's, I qualify that as a fair range, is that we're a city of 20,000 people that is in a fiscal emergency, and I think it is a fair range based on salaries that we see going to other people in this, in this line of work, but also taking into consideration our fiscal issues. And I understand where you're coming from with the pension stuff, and I also see the argument of wanting to, you, when you become fire chief, you are no longer a part of the union, you are an employee and a manager of the city, and so those things are treated differently.
Sure.
I think it's, it's a testament to how good the firefighter union has bargained for its members, that when we have a fair range of chief's salary and a fair range of benefits, that we are already, our lieutenants and our, and our assistant chief have priced themselves out of the job. I mean, congratulations on the job that the union has done for their firefighters, because they deserve it, everybody deserves it, but they've essentially priced themselves out of what is a fair-paying chief's position for a city of 20,000 people in fiscal emergency. And that disappoints me, because I don't want an assistant fire chief, or lieutenant, or somebody who's qualified to look at what is a fair range and say, "I already make more than that." I don't want to do that. And that's not on all of us. We haven't been here that long, none of us have been involved in contract negotiations over the last 10, 15, 20 years. But that's where we find ourselves now, where union contracts have actually outpaced what the city can do for its upper management chief positions, and it is a fair package. It might not, it might not be the best, but it is a fair range. It covers, you still get pension, you still get lots of great benefits, you're still going to get fantastic healthcare. So that's where my mind keeps coming back to, is here we have a situation where our firefighters, our staff in our fire department are telling us that, "We're sorry, we make too much money now, we don't want that job." And it's a disappointing thing for me to hear and for me to want to deal with, because I want trained and qualified people in this position, but I also have to consider the financial realities that the city faces, and just the practicalities of what this job, what we can afford to pay for this job. And so I feel your frustration, I want you to feel mine, in that it's a very difficult situation to try to come in and adjust this based on the fact that you and fellow firefighters are doing very well. That's, thank you.
Can I respond to that?
Sure.
So I think when you speak to that, I think you look at the average compensation of just a paramedic firefighter in this area. Cincinnati makes more than us, Blue Ash makes more than us. There's a number of departments that make more than what Norwood does. I mean, Blue Ash is hiring now, they're top out at $82,000 a year for firefighter paramedic. Indian Hill, Midoriya Indian Hill is a fire district solely supported by property tax. They're hiring a fire chief right now.
What did it go for?
107.
Exactly, which is within our range.
So, right, but the range, see, this is, I guess, my difficulty with the range is, what is that range and how is it set?
I believe it's set by setting a baseline, or benchmarking other communities and other fire departments, what their minimum is, what their maximum is. You get an average, you get a median, we determine where we want to fall within that, what the city can afford, what benefits the city can afford, and that's how you set it, that's what's right here in front of us. It's not, it's not like somebody came and made up numbers. It works with the numbers that I'm looking across 25 different city municipalities. It's in a fair range based on that.
So as the ordinance was constructed, there's a lot of variables to that, and it's very unclear, having an appointed person that just arbitrarily sets your salary?
It's called having a boss.
No, I understand that, but having an appointed person who may not have a fundamental understanding of what is required of the position?
Well, I think, I think the, I'm looking at what other cities have set that, and I'm not saying that, I'm not looking at our city saying, we're saying, I'm saying, I'm looking at across all these cities, and we're within a fair range based on the data that I've got. So...
I don't think I'd take, I guess, my initial issue was the starting, the starting range of 88. And then the, it's very arbitrary, I guess. There's no list of qualifications, what, where my qualifications put me at. It doesn't say. It just says, here you go, this is what we can set you at. And then with civil service, that'd be another question I have for civil service, and I'll bring it to you guys, but what does that mean, paid more? You know, is that 1% more?
No, I understand, I understand that, and I mean, I think that probably should be said as well.
With the ordinance, that was my main concern. There's a lot of not spelled out variables. And now, I understand, I think it's wise for the city to have a set range. I think it would be to their advantage to have a very specific range set, what A, B, C, D, and E. Now, I'm not adverse to having a boss, or multiple bosses. I'm not sure that it's appropriate for someone's to be able to arbitrarily hear, "This is going to be your salary." I think you should, you should qualify for said salary. So I think that's part of my message.
I understand that, but, and I think that's why there's a range. I mean, 88 to 111 is a fairly large range, and you're right, 88 is, when I look at this, 88 is, well, it's a few thousand dollars above the average minimum, and 111 typically falls within, I'd say, the median, the minimum of the average max. So, you know, I don't think, part of this is to set a place for the future chief of fire, and both, both fire and police, to have a place to negotiate with the city. So, and I understand what you're saying, that you want more spelled out in that, but part of that also can take place in negotiation, because, and it's coming out of the union world. The union world sets everything in stone. When I go, when I go to a job interview, I put my best case forward, I ask for a salary, and then I negotiate it, and then I negotiate it, and I negotiate based on what I know, my experience, and that's what I would assume that in a situation like this, somebody would do. You would come in and you would negotiate for that 111, or for 110, if you felt you deserved that. Plus, you could go that 111, and if the assistant chief is making 117, then you're going to get 10% more on top of that, too. So that's where, that's where I'm saying, I think it's fair.
I think a 10-day window for negotiating, once a civil service test is done, makes it difficult, and then, do I even want to spend that much money to purchase the books to study for the three months of non-stop studying, to have, to come in number one, and to have, have to go through that when it, when it, it should be spelled out? In my opinion, you know, I would imagine that a lot of these cities, they spell it out, this is it, and then to this, to this, to this. Like Evendale, for example, their fire chief makes 125, right? All career department, yes, I know it's Evendale, it's a village that has their largest employee, General Electric, but automatically, it's 2%, just 2% every year, and that's what it does. I, you know, for me, I like black and white. I think you're putting people in a tough position, that they have to negotiate what their salary range is going to be for a position like that. That's just my opinion. I'm happy, I'm glad I had the opportunity to express that to you guys.
And I thank you for coming in, I just, you know, we have a good, open conversation, I just want you to...
Having a reasonable discussion, you know, all I can do is give you my feedback on it, and then you have an important decision to make.
Right.
I wanted to make sure everyone was clear that, you know, being a statutory city, that really limits your pool of what you can do in hiring, and there may be some unintended consequences to that, that at least, at least was warned, I guess would be the best way to put it.
Thank you for...
Thank you for having me, appreciate it.
Anybody else have any questions? Ms. Stevenson?
Thank you. My last one, you mentioned that the holiday structure is different, and I just wanted to ask, could you go over that again? It wasn't really clear on the impact I felt like you were trying to express.
It's not, I think the impact is minimal. I just, the unions have negotiated different holidays, and I think there's maybe two different ones on it. I'd have to look at them side by side to give you, but from a standpoint, too, is, you know, leading a group of people who are, have a holiday now, we're open 365, 24/7, right? And so holidays work a little differently for the line guys and do for the administration, but, you know, I typically try, the only holidays I'm at the firehouse is Christmas and New Year's Eve, and I'm there. I was there for a little bit of Christmas Eve this year, I just end up taking kind of time to be off with my family in the afternoon. So I take that back, I was actually off this year for Christmas Eve, it was my first one, so I was off Christmas Eve and Christmas Day and New Year's Eve. But as a point of the impact for the department operations, minimal probably, to be, to be fair, I think that you're talking two different days probably from the total package of one celebrated on this one, and one celebrated on this one.
Thank you very much for coming. It's great to hear your point of view.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief McCabe, Assistant Chief McCabe. Does anyone have suggestions as to how to proceed from here? You want to leave it in Committee of the Whole for further, further study? Do you want to bring it out for consideration? I'm just looking for direction, which direction you all want to go in? I'm just looking for direction, which direction you all want to go in? If you have questions, yes, Mr. Thompson?
I don't mind keeping it in committee because I think there are, as Assistant Chief said, there are probably some things that, that could be looked at and see if we need to add more detail. However, I'm a graphic designer who just happens to be a councilman, and I have no idea how to write a contract or how to put things into a contract that, uh, that would spell out things properly. I could, I could totally draw one up.
Yeah, that would be great.
But.
I'm sorry, I couldn't resist.
So I, I don't know if we, um, I, I don't, I don't mind asking, um, the authors of the ordinance to, uh, to, to potentially look at, at putting a little more rigor or, or detail into certain sections. But again, I, I'm not prepared, like, we could leave it in this committee and, and it would sit here because I, I don't know, and I don't know that anybody here knows how to actually spell those things out adequately.
Yes, Mr. Thompson?
Excuse me. Thank you, Madam President. Uh, so my, you know, Mr. Assistant Chief McCabe, uh, there's one thing Assistant Chief McCabe brought up that I think that we definitely, it, it needs to be spelled out, and that's about the pension drawdown at the end of the career. Um, there are certain benefits that the Ohio Police and Fire Pension Fund, um, provide, and there's strategic ways that I think that you can do your pay at the end of time. And I think that we do need to make sure that, um, we address that or ensure that it's addressed through the ordinance, because that would be unfair to any, uh, chief if they wouldn't have the same opportunities to, and I'm just going to say, to, to play with their pay at the end of their career. And again, every, it happens to every single firefighter that retires after a career and everywhere. But there's things that happen that can artificially raise the last three years or so, or so, so many years, I'm not going to speak five, thank you, yeah. I'm not going to speak that I know completely how it all works, but, uh, that probably should be addressed. I would like to see us move forward with this sooner rather than later. Um, you know, I'd maybe like the opportunity if, uh, if some language can be added around pensions that, uh, you know, maybe the current chief or the assistant chief might be okay with, I'd like to try to work on that language and get it to council as soon as possible. Um, that could mean that we have another committee, the whole meeting, uh, like, pretty soon, or that could mean that maybe, that we, uh, just let it be brought up at a council meeting, you know, when it's ready. Um, I, I personally prefer the second one, and then we can always, uh, discuss it on council floor and we can table it till the next meeting, I mean, what have you. But, um, you know, I just going to want to say that I do think that there probably needs to be something added for that, just for, to ensure that we're not being, uh, putting them at a disadvantage against chiefs and across the state that, that have the opportunity to do that.
Mrs. Hanahan?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, he spoke before I did, I was going to say, a lot of what he just said, I think time is important on getting this taken care of so they can decide what they want to do when it comes to taking the test and so on. So whatever we decide to do, I think we ought to move as fast, well, you know, rapidly. And I think probably just putting it into ordinance form and then discussing it on, uh, council floor would be the best way to do it.
Thank you, Ms. Hanahan.
Years ago, we reported out with the suggestions of adding more detail to the ordinance prior to bringing it back before council or having council look at possibly additional drafts if there is one or something to that effect. So that it's out of committee, because if it's, say the committee, it's not going to come out of this committee until we would meet again for any suggestions going into it, you really wouldn't be able, by the time you have another committee meeting and then try to add suggestions to it, then it goes back to the law department. So, well, what you're saying, to move it forward, report it out, add the suggestions and bring it back and for further discussion.
Yeah.
At a council meeting.
Yeah.
So I made a list of Assistant Chief's concerns, buyback days. I guess those are all pension effects? The buyback days are all pensionable?
Only holidays.
And holidays?
No, only, so.
Yeah, come on up. I just want to make sure that I understand, because I want to list these concerns because I want, you know, the author of this to, um, know what detail we're asking.
So, real quick, so the Ohio Police and Fire Pension Fund, it, it's a, it's a different scale. So the group that I got hired with, um, some of the guys, this pension set in their top three years, me is my top five years, and that, that's what I'm going into most likely. Um, so, so things that are pension contributable are essentially sick time buyback, time earned that year, um, holidays sold in that year are pension contributable, um, vacations are not, and longevity, longevity pay is, is pension contributable. And, and the pen, the longevity is a little bit of a hit. I, to me, it's, it is what it is, that, that, I don't really lose any sleep over that, but selling holidays, um, would be important for me and, and probably a lot of guys that are in my position. Now, you could get a, a person who is, who's already set their pension potentially, but it really doesn't affect, there's a lot of variables to this. But knowing the, the people who are eligible for this right off the bat, there's a, myself who has 13 years left if I do, do the drop, um, there's a captain who has 15 or 14 years left if he does it, um, and then you've got a captain who will not take the test and another captain who may or may not, who's already in the drop, his pension is set, and the other captain is ineligible. He, he will just gotten promoted probably when this test goes. Um, and to the, the speed of this, I would suggest that while getting it done promptly is probably a, a good thing, getting it done right promptly is probably the best. Because I, I think, I think what you're doing is, is probably smart. It leaves a lot of that, you know, I, I'm going to go in, take the job and there's no salary set, so the mayor's my best friend and we're going to negotiate something ridiculous, right? But on the same hand, I think those people have to have, have some protection too. Maybe the, the mayor's adversarial to that person, just, just so it's clear, clear and concise and it's, uh, leaves very little ambiguity, I think is, is smart, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So when you talk about, um, asking for more specificity or more detail about pension effects, that would include the sick time and holiday buyback? That's what you're asking for? Mr. Thompson, when you asked about pension effects or detail?
Yes, and, um, I can also do some legwork outside to consult with, uh, probably reach out to Assistant Chief McCabe myself just to get a little bit more detail. But just want to make sure that, uh, and I don't even know all the provisions that'd be there, but just make sure the ones that are truly, like the, except the sellback type, the buyback stuff is included in there so that, um, they don't necessarily have to, you know, I don't want to necessarily write them a check if Assistant Chief McCabe took the fire chief job this year and he still had another 10 or 15 years left, I don't want him to be forced to have to get, you know, us to writing him a check right now of all his buybacks and not be able to use some of that stuff in the future when he actually gets to the time that the pension, or the pension fund is looking at for basing his retirement, so.
Any other specific areas that you want more detail in other than the pensionable effects? He mentioned specific steps for salaries, you know, based on qualifications. Is that something that you're interested in or that you want more detail on or no? Ms., Ms. Stevenson?
Thank you. Um, I think one of the outages overall, whenever we're setting ranges, is looking at what are the requirements for what part of the range? I, I think that most jobs you can negotiate, but there's usually an understanding of these are base requirements versus these are preferred. Since we are statutory, I don't know how much we delineate, but I think at one point, Assistant Chief McCabe said something about setting expectations. I don't know if that was your exact phrase or not, so I'm wondering if, if there are specific, specific expectations we might have, um, that are not included in statutory law, if we could look at how might we express those and if they would in fact be just overall expectations or if they would be expectations for certain parts of the range. And, and I think too, it would be helpful for me to better understand, um, how do we consider more or less experience? And when I say less, I mean the basic amount of experience per, per O R C. That's all.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments? Yes, Ms. Stevenson?
Thank you. Just a general comment, I think this is, it feels like the fifth time we've come back to what feels to me like a clarion call, we need an H R director. I, I mean, I really liked the pun, Eric could draw one out, but I mean, seriously, like, I'm, I'm thinking, and if anyone on council or anyone in the public wants to reach out, if there's an H R director, if there's a resource we can go to, I know I'm going to try and reach out to some other municipalities and find out how their H R department person plays a role, but I, I feel like that's a bridge we're missing.
Thank you. I think we've all realized that for a number of years, but thank you for reiterating it. Mr. Thompson, do you have another comment?
I was just going to say that, um, you know, it will definitely be something that should probably be looked at for the fiscal recovery plan, so I encourage you to ensure that you make your voice heard as well, and well, I think we, hopefully we can find room to include that for future years.
Thank you. Okay. So I will report this out of committee and ask that, um, the Safety Service Director and the mayor's office, um, provide us a little bit more detail regarding the pension effects, specifically sick time buy, and holiday buyback time, possibly longevity, and then, um, expectations for training and, yes, Mr. Thompson?
Also potentially, um, that whatever that percentage above, uh, Assistant Chief, that the chief, uh, is guaranteed.
I, I was told that that's, and I was told, I didn't check with the civil service commissioner, but I was told that that is civil service law, but I will verify that.
Okay, that's cool.
I will verify that.
Yeah.
And I don't think there is a specific, there's not a dollar amount, I mean, I guess in, in all practicality, it could be a dollar more or whatever, but it, I, I was told that there was, um, a civil service law that they have to make rate, that rank equals increased pay.
Right, no, I understand that. I just meant, do we want to set a percentage?
Set a percentage, okay.
On that, that's all I guess.
All right. All right. Thank you. Um, the next item that is on the agenda is the beginning of a capital improvements plan. Um, the, uh, financial recovery folks from the state have been, um, talking about this for a while, asking us to begin a discussion of where we, um, taking a real genuine look at the capital improvements that quite frankly have been ignored for a number of years for, because of necessity of making payroll and paying bills. And so, um, what you have before you is a worksheet that I know Mr. Thompson has been working on. You've been in communication with, um, several departments, and that's a beginning discussion. Um, so when you pull this up, I'll let you, I'm going to give you the floor, Mr. Thompson, to walk us through this. And I think all of the departments have been contacted by the, uh, the Safety Service Director and asked for, um, a list, so I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Madam President. So as part of our, I guess, financial planning process, uh, you know, in previous years, the city has just barely been, I mean, we've barely been able to keep the doors open. Um, we've ran into negative and, um, we have an opportunity, um, this year and for probably a couple of years to finally take care of the things that have to be taken care of. Uh, there's, we all know there's quite a few needs around the city and they may or may not all be captured here. There could definitely be more that are not captured here that need to be. Uh, but I've reached out to the, you know, Safety Service Director, Police Chief, Fire Chief, Assistant Chief McCabe, um, the Recreation Director, uh, you know, to try to get as many things as possible that this, that need to be done. And some of these were submitted last year during the budgeting process, uh, last late September, early October. Some of these were submitted more recently. Uh, but we've just tried to put together a list for the next five years of, um, items that the city, uh, has to work on. And so, and again, anything in here is, so that there's a, so in this list, there's like the description of the project, uh, there's a, a priority that's just a priority, the first thing that's kind of, the priority's there that, um, between the Safety Service Director and I that we had thought that it should be, however, they can be changed. Uh, and so we would essentially use kind of that priority in this, uh, to try to help determine which one of these, which of these items that we will fund, um, as well. And so the total there too, for all five years is listed, and then a breakout by year of where the funds would be spent for any one item is listed on there as well. Uh, Ms. Stevenson, do you have a question?
Yeah, I just want to back up. The priority was set by the Safety Service Director, is that what you said?
Well, the priority was just, it, it was put on there. I, I set part of them, the Safety Service Director helped provide it.
This is like arbitrary beginning?
Yeah, yes, yes. And they're our priorities, so like, we can change it. You know, like if we decide that there's something here that's like, that's a high that, that doesn't, shouldn't be a high, let's talk about it and change it. I mean, that's what we're kind of here for tonight. If there's something on here tonight, and also we can, we'll have future meetings on this as well, if there's something on here that's a low and it's like, whoa, 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 we've got to get that done, then we can make it a high. If something on here a medium, we can change it to whatever. So it's really, this is our list.
Um, thank you, James. Can you tell me like where it says replace city hall roof system? Did you get an estimate for that or are these just numbers somebody came up with off the top of their head?
These are just planning numbers that the Safety, like the Safety Service Director provided that number. So he's talked to people about it, but there's not, not, these things don't all have official quotes kind of with them. Now, we will get those and we can use those to refine, but, uh, these are estimates for planning purposes.
Okay. The quoted. I think so. If you've got to do.
So we can go through, I mean, we can kind of go through each section if you'd like and look at essentially what, um, what's listed in here. If you have questions about anything specific, we could talk about that as well.
Thank you. So having the ordinances bound, I'm not sure, is that separate from the actual general update of getting them codified or is that included in that?
It's separate. So this is essentially, there's, if, if you look in previous years, like if you go back to 2000, 2005, we have like a master book that'll have all the minutes, the ordinances, everything kind of there for public record. Right now, even stuff from four or five years ago, they're just literally sitting in file folders in a file cabinet. You just pull out and you open that, that meeting state and you can see the minutes and what have you. But that's not a good way of keeping it for long-term storage and preservation.
Okay.
Yep. So, yeah, I'll just go ahead and go through each kind of section here and we can just, we can talk about, uh, some of the items that are listed on here. And you'll notice too that there's things that's broken out from, uh, general fund, street fund, and then there's one item in the water fund. This may, this is not necessarily a complete list for all eternity. This is a list that the safety, like that we have for right now, except we can add things to it, take things away, what have you. But it's just a discussion draft to kind of start the conversation. Um, so for the clerk of council, um, so there's funds in there for, or proposed funds in there to have the council minutes and ordinances bound. For the police, or sorry, building department, uh, essentially they've requested to have, I mean, they've got some pretty old vehicles, have their vehicles replaced. For police, so group together with police, there's the Crime Control Administration Auxiliary Police Departments all kind of together. Uh, the request there was to have three cruisers in 2019 and then two cruisers each year thereafter. Uh, the state audit, the financial supervisors, they were somewhat, they're a little bit concerned or had questions about the timeline about whether we would need that many cruisers like over time. So it's something that, uh, we're going to continue to look into there. But essentially, the, the item here is how much it would cost if we did three in 2019, which in 2019, they probably do need three, like they, they're really behind. So the question is, the question will be, do we need two going forward?
My question is.
But essentially, the, the item here is how much it would cost if we did three in 2019, which in 2019, they probably do need three, like they, they're really behind, so the question is, the question will be, do we need two going forward?
My question is $660,000 for five, five police cars.
No, that's two, it's be three in 2019 and then two each additional, sorry about that, two each year.
Each additional. So that total is for five years?
Yeah.
Yes, yes, yes.
Yeah, thank you, I'm like, what are we about?
Yeah, sorry, I should have.
That's a total, yeah.
Yes, 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 so you'll see, yeah, there's $120,000 in 2023, 2023, each year has that amount.
Could you, do you get a chance to adjust this document?
Yeah, we can.
Maybe, can we just put five-year total? That would help in that column, thank you.
Okay, I'll put two each year afterwards. Um, there's also a request from the Police Chief for vehicles for the drug unit, the C I S, those vehicles are less expensive, so he was fine with those vehicles being purchased in one in 2020 and one in 2022. Another request from the Police Chief was for the Police Academy for lead remediation. And, and he very much, by the way, too, when he, I can, I'll send the letter out that I received from him to put this together, but these are wants, some of the, some of these are wants from him, not necessarily needs, but, um, so we put that in there as a low priority, but lead remediation, essentially the, there's air quality tests that have not come back positive, is that correct, Madam President?
I'm not certain, I, it was interesting that everybody somehow knew that there was a lead contamination in the Police Academy because they used to qualify there, and the bullets apparently had contained lead, and when I questioned it at the Health Department, they could not find any written confirmation, and actually went to, they were looking at the state to try to get the confirmation of exactly what was found to be wrong. I know it had been posted at one point in time, but they're still, we are still in the investigative stages of what exactly needs to be remediated, but right now, my understanding is that the Police Department goes to either Cincinnati or Hamilton County to qualify for their shooting now, and they used to do it there, so. I don't know that any, I haven't checked with the Health Department lately on that, I'll add that to my list of things to do tomorrow.
So the next item is the HVAC system for the police station, there's stuff in there from back when it was a bank, and they've just re-twisted it and configured it and just jerry-rigged it, not the police officers, but just the various contractors the city or has tried to get to keep things running at the lowest cost. And so essentially, there's definitely units in there that need to be replaced, some of them might be able to be saved, but it, there definitely needs to be some reconfiguring of it, so at some point, that needs to, that's going to need to be done, and we're going to need to budget for that. Just compute, overall computer replacement, which I don't have in every department, computer replacement, so it was just something that Chief mentioned, so I need to talk to April and Anna Mary about whether she, they want, in this plan, do they want to see us budget it for every department or for no department, so it's in there for the moment, because would that normally be, would be almost an operating expense, so we would just find, find it there, but it's something that's here now, it doesn't have to stay, so.
I think it, I'm thinking about my own workplace, how there is a plan, and you know, some computers rotate off in different years. I, I would want to know, is there, is there a financial advantage to putting it all in operating, the replacement strategy, rather than breaking it out by department? I know that we're obviously inventorying what the high needs are, whatever, low, medium, but at least the way I'm reading this right now, we're, we're seeing the, the strategy by department versus overall.
Yeah, I, I don't know if there's any financial advantage to doing it either way, I think putting it in the plan, like in actual, in a capital improvements plan would allow, ensure it gets, ensure it gets done, so it doesn't just, you know, right now, we just budget for contractual materials and supplies that, you know, in big groups, when we normally pass appropriations, having it here would help to ensure it did get done if we really wanted to make sure that's where those funds went, but it doesn't have to necessarily be in a capital improvement plan.
So I guess as a point of clarity, once this improvement plan is created, does the state still govern the execution of this plan, or is this kind of like the launching pad, if you will, for more autonomy with a new budget?
The state, I don't think is going to budget, or going to have authority off of this plan or the Financial Supervision Commission, I mean, they might want to adopt it as an appendix to the plan, I'm not sure, but it, I don't imagine they would do that. I think they're going to look at the, the same setup of the financial recovery plan that we had previously. I might be wrong about it, I haven't talked to April and Anna Mary about that same question with them.
I don't know that you would be able to say that you're going to paint a building this year, and you have to paint it this year, whereas all of a sudden, you have two cruisers break down and you need another one, I'm going to put a cruiser on the street versus painting a building, so I don't think you can put specifics in the plan that, I mean, I think it'd be a general numbers, but I don't know specifics where you're going to paint a building, or going to remediate this in this year, and that has to be done. I would think that these are suggestions and potentially the money could be allocated for that, but if something else comes up, that's more of an emergency, then that would be set, bumped out another year or so, so I don't think we can put a hard guideline that, yes, we're going to buy a computer this year, yes, we're going to buy a pumper tomorrow. I think it's, it's a guide for that, what the wants and the needs are, but as far as to say we're specifically going to do that in that year, I don't know that we can be held, held fast to that. You know, by the plan, however, might say, you know, might set $30,000 aside for, say, Police Academy remediation, but all of a sudden, you're not going to use it for that because you have some catastrophe, but it's not saying that that need goes away, it's still, still there, but, you know, we're not going to spend money on it potentially that year, I don't know that we can be, have your feet held to the fire on something specific where it may not be a priority when that year comes about. We're, we're kind of projecting things out, we don't know what the hell is going to happen in 2022, 2023, whether we're going to have other needs that are going to come up, that are going to be in more dire need than some of the things on here, but you have to have the guideline, for, for sure.
My understanding is that the state really wants us to be more in a planning mode as opposed to reactive, instead of, you know, we have a paramedic unit that's now broken down and we haven't bought one in five years, that we begin that planning process and, as you say, plan, know what the plan is. I'm your representative to O K I, and we just went through this whole process, they listed every single, every single thing that they own, every, every vehicle that they own, they knew how many miles were on it, they knew what year it was, and they have a replacement timeframe, you know, they have it in their budget. Every so many years, we're going to replace this car, you know, this vehicle or whatever, and so I think it's, it's a, it's a planning document, as you said, Mr. Tanker, to begin to plan that if we happen to have, we have some money in the budget, that we need to address these capital things, capital items. I did get, I normally don't even look at my phone, but Chandra Corbin texted me, and when I saw it was from her, she said that the state did not have records for non-residential tests, and the licensing entity for those who do testing does not have a way of knowing who did the testing. They suggested that if the Norwood Police Department couldn't produce the report or who did the testing, that it probably would be related to an OSHA requirement, so we'll have to check with OSHA, so I wanted to give you that information. One question I have on the Police Department before we move on, was there any mention of the bulletproof vests? Because I don't want to go through what we went through the last time of, again, no planning and not having bulletproof vests for our officers, are those kept? He, the chief didn't say that they needed those, or was there a discussion about that?
Yeah, no, it's a great question, thank you. Yeah, there was discussion about it, the chief thinks that he's got, chief has, he says that he's got enough money, or he thinks he has enough funds already appropriated for the bulletproof vests, so he feels comfortable there, but he is checking on that though, we talked about that, I think it was yesterday, but he is checking in general to make sure that he's got, he feels like the financial recovery plan has, already passed, has funds for it, but I would say that if we do want to ensure, you know, that if we need more bulletproof vests one year or something like that, you know, we could add it, like, we could add that here, we could add for the Fire Department, like bunk their.
Exactly.
Their bunker gear, I mean. If we want to get to that level of detail, which I think would be totally fine, I mean, with me, I like, I like to see that on there and planned out, we can definitely get there, it's just not at this level of detail.
Okay. I'll just bring it up for the record.
No, I think it's, yeah.
Talk about planning.
It has been talked about, for sure, good question. Last part, just again, with the maintenance of the building, there's definitely needs some touch-up painting, and there's also some issues with the flashing, I guess, just ensuring the roof is all sealed up and good to go. You know, again, that's just the, the, the number that's listed there is just an estimate for planning purposes, but that doesn't mean that whatever work has to be done will cost that much. Is there any other questions for the police stuff? Okay. So for fire, five items on here, so the ladder, there's a ladder truck and an engine that both need to be replaced in, in the next somewhat few years. So the engine, I talked with Assistant Chief McCabe and Chief Wallace today, the engine is the highest priority, partly because the, the backup engine is an open cab one, and there's a lot of safety requirement, like issues there, it also can't hold a lot of the life-saving supplies, I think that the, the newer engine can hold, and the one that we would purchase can hold, so. The ladder truck is very much approaching its end of life, and, you know, with the ladder truck, it's very, there's no backup for the ladder truck, so I think we have to borrow a ladder truck at times, is that correct?
When, when we've had a ladder truck go down, we've actually had to borrow one, we borrowed one from a little Miami Fire Rescue the last time, and we were actually in discussions with the city of Cincinnati to utilize one of their reserve apparatus, the unfortunate part is that Cincinnati takes about three months to get through the legal wrangling of their citizens' offices to have the full harmless agreements and all that done. We've attempted to, to get those done, just to have them completed, but it's, it's a monumental task, and it's, unfortunately, it's not worth the, the effort, but we've, we've been able to, to do that. The issue we have is, is, as a ladder truck, of course, is, they're expensive, and it wouldn't be feasible to have a, have a reserve unit, but we, when it goes down for service for one or two days, we just operate with a, the other pumper in service and utilize after that, so.
Could I ask a question? Do you, does the city own the lot behind the Fire Department?
Uh, no, that is owned by Mr. Hall.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm just thinking of ease of getting equipment in and out, it's not like you all back it in all the time, and I'm just, I mean, it would just seem to make sense, if you had that lot, it would be easier to pull through, but I wasn't sure who owned it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bonsell, you said that, I think you said that is the fire engine was the highest priority? Is that just for this department, or is that a common overall for the plan?
That, the, can you repeat the last part of your question?
Mm-hmm, is the fire engine the highest priority just for this department or for the overall plan?
I think that the engine is the highest priority for, oh, I would not say it's necessarily the highest priority for the entire plan, but I would say it is an important component of it.
All right, thank you, I just want to make sure I knew what you meant.
And if I could clarify, I was going to ask this, when it comes to priority, are these listed in high, per department, or, as she said, per whole, for the whole city, with everything combined?
So the, when you look at the high, medium, and low, essentially, there's 34 items that are high, 18 medium, and four low. So part of that is because the high ones just are in all of our attention, you know, we can see them now, we know how, that they're, they're issues, so they're easier to find. The mediums and lows are not necessarily, I mean, there might be other things that need to get done, like, you know, having the council minutes and ordinances bound, that was a request from the clerk of council, but it was a low priority, he knew, I mean, we all know it's not the high priority. I would just say that the, it was just a general, this priority that's there is just a general evaluating the project, just, just thought of what the party should be, it's not necessarily reflective of what our priorities should be, so we can change these priorities as well. One of the big goals of this too, is that April and Anna Mary are going to, the financial supervisors are going to use this once, you know, as a expression of kind of our priorities as, kind of our intentions, as they try to help to craft the plan, so it's not necessarily... Yes, it, that's one of the, the reasons why we're going through this process now, is to help them to craft, to adjust the plan.
Information is pouring in.
Excellent, I love it.
An update from Chief Kramer, he had testing done on the surfaces in the academy, and they came back thresholds recommended for residential. They recommended remediation and a capable air cleaner. OSHA only has standards for air quality, the actual air was not tested in the academy at the recommendation of the company.
Madam President, whose, whose response was that?
Chief Kramer. I'll get more information tomorrow.
And that would be one too, that, like, before we would go through with that, like, potentially, the Public Safety Committee might want to look at that, just to ensure that that's a good investment into the future, maybe look at schedules for how often they plan on using it, and what it costs to rent out other facilities, you know, travel time for the officers if we're built for that, things like that, it probably would be positive to look into that. Okay, so the, okay, so another item, another component of this is, you know, definitely the engine needs to get, we need to work on that as soon as possible. The ladder, though, I think Assistant Chief, if we had to, we could delay that another year, okay, so we could delay it until?
So it's 1996, it's currently 23 years old, it has a drop time of 25 years. It's been serviceable, it, the question becomes, what happens if it fails ladder testing? The ladder gets tested every year, that's kind of what happened with the, the old tractor drawn that was here, it failed ladder testing, and then you got, then you're done, so you've got something with it. But 25 years is mandatory retirement age, so we have time. I think for, for the general speaking point is, these things aren't off the shelf, they need this money. A ladder truck, you're looking at a year, a year from, from order, it takes you to leave out 45 to 60 days just to go through the specifications process, another 30 days for bid process, so 90 days before you even sign the documents, and that's 365 days, bill out, depending on the manufacturer's availability. But the planning time is probably, we're getting close, however, the actual expenditure time, a couple of years.
So that could theoretically could be moved, the first, so one other item to note is that the only two items in this plan that we would finance would be the ladder truck, because that would be a total of somewhere around 1.1 to 1.2 million dollars, and then the engine, which would be around $600,000. So those two items we would finance over, I have proposed here a four-year period, so $300,000 payments for the ladder truck, $150,000 payments for the engine. Now, the financial supervisors will probably want to weigh in there, and the city auditor on how, you know, exactly how it finances, but just to, so you know there, that's why those costs are spread out, but it's really good practice though, in general, to not necessarily have to finance like a public works dump truck, like we had issues with earlier this year, or I guess it was, excuse me, last year, or to finance a backhoe or anything like that, like, those should be purchased with appropriations from the city and not necessarily financed like we've done in the past, so you'll just kind of see that as a change from.
And those two items that are proposed to be financed would have to be in the financial recovery plan and approved by the Financial Planning and Supervision Commission because it's new debt, so that would have to be placed into the financial recovery plan.
Okay.
Understandably, they would be financed.
Yeah, so an ambulance. So I talked with Chief Wallace today about the ambulance, and I've got a few emails, like, I'm going to be sending out another sheet that has some more background on a lot of these requests as well, like, letters that I've gotten and other things. I've got those kind of, I've tried to collect those in, in one central area. So I'll be sending that out here tonight or tomorrow. But one of the things of the ambulance is, because we have a Ford-based ambulance or Ford chassis, it is not as reliable necessarily as some of the ones that we paid more in the past for. However, it's, I think, I mean, Assistant Chief McCabe, would you like to speak on maybe the ambulance?
Sure. You want me to go up there?
Yeah.
Probably, yeah.
That's a problem.
And maybe talk about the, I guess, yeah, just lifespan and?
Sure. No problem.
Cool.
So, like anything else, public safety equipment's expensive, right? So traditionally, we have been buying commercial chassis internationals that would typically give us a, a long service life, and we always attempted to purchase those on a five-year schedule, meaning that they would see basically 10 years of frontline service and five years of reserve service, and then be rotated out. Currently, we have a 2018 light-duty chassis, that's the one Mr. Bonzal's speaking of, and then we have a medium-duty Ford that was bought in 2011, and then we still have a commercial chassis that was bought in 2006, so that's 13 years old. And that is actually in frontline status today. What we've done, knowing that we've got a light-duty unit in, in service, is the apparatus officer, Captain Cardabello, has kind of devised a rotation plan where we run each unit a set amount of time, it rotates backwards, so we really don't have a true reserve unit, although we always have one in, in spare in case we have mechanical issues, but they're all being utilized at some point during the year. So in doing that, we've actually, we're hopeful we're going to elongate that, that service life. A typical ambulance, like the 2018 Ford, it usually sees three years of service and then it's rotated off and done. Our second unit doesn't see
That's the light duty.
That's the light duty, yes. The mediums, medium duty, depending, or heavy duty, usually sees five years of frontline, five years of backup, being in medic 282 position, and then five years of reserve. But we've kind of instituted, wrote, and kind of by need, the rotation policy. So it's our, our estimate that if we're able to continue doing a rotation policy, probably every three to four years, I think the chief said four years, I think we'll have better data once this one reaches the end of this year, just to see. Last year was great, we, we didn't put any money into it, obviously it was under warranty, but it was never down for repairs, other than an electric switch that was a warranty issue, nothing mechanically, really. So I think, in looking at them, because they're expensive, I mean, the heavy-duty ambulances, you're looking at $300,000. We're looking more like $200,000 for the light-duty ones, so I guess you'd have to extrapolate that over the number of the service life that you can expect out of it. But I think if you did, did a four-year rotation program, now, that would mean you probably need to buy one, another ambulance here in the next year or so, just so we have a competent rotation, and then get that 2006 out, out of the, out of the, the rotation, but, yeah. There's not as heavy, I mean, it's a, it's a van style, we're getting away from diesels in there because of the, we have short transport times to hospitals, fuel is, is not really an issue at that. Diesels are a little more difficult to, to manage from a maintenance standpoint, and, yeah. Any other questions regarding that one?
So your recommendations, right now, this new ambulance looks like it's in '22. You're saying it probably would need to take place, your recommendation is earlier?
I, I think we would want to have some input in that at the end of this year, when we take a really good look at the unit and get it evaluated. It may be perfectly appropriate where it is, it's kind of an unknown factor, and that's assuming that the other two units were able to maintain rotating, right? You know, our pack experience, that's probably workable, but if the other units go down and that receives a lot more frontline service time, it may not. I think, I think that's a reasonable idea right there.
Okay.
But I think we, we want to have some conversations at the end of the year, after we do a fleet evaluation.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
I'd say you can stay up here if you'd like, because I'm going to ask you about the roof. So the roof also, the roof system at the fire station also needs to be replaced. I don't have all the details, the Safety Service Director, or, I guess, have you all looked into the cost of that?
We, we did early last year, so we'd have to, have to have them resubmit, I think. So the problem with the firehouse roof is that the, the design isn't really
Flat.
Well, there's a number of different surfaces. There are at least four or five different flat-area surfaces, and then seven different peak surfaces or slopes. And unfortunately, maintenance, it's a metal, the large portion of the roof is metal, and so maintenance was just one of those things that just fell by the wayside, unfortunately. I, I think, if I remember correctly, and I'd have to dig through, I, I think we received an estimate that was a, a patch job, but it gave a 10-year warranty, and that was like $84,000. I, I want to say that the total replacement of that roof system was around $400,000. Now, to, to, to talk about that, too, and I think this may be, and I don't want to step on the police department's toes, but I think at some point, this city really needs to look at a, a public safety facility. I'm not saying now, I'm not saying five years, but at long range, I mean, that fire station's going to be 50 years old in a couple of years. Normal usable life in firehouses range, but those built after the '60s typically see a 50-year lifespan. Our, our fire station is not set up for a coed work environment, so if we hired a female, we would have some considerable immediate expenses just to make reasonable accommodations for a female firefighter. So I, I think, and, and the police station kind of has migrated from here to a bank going, and I, I don't know that it's appropriate for me to talk about the police station, but from my experience at other public safety centers, that's probably not an ideal location. Location's fine, ideal setup. I, I think it would be wise, as we get, go down, and I know it's a lot, right, you guys are dealing with the, the financial recovery and, and trying to just get everything together, but it would be wise to really do an evaluation on, on the facilities themselves, and maybe, maybe look at long-range planning of retiring both those places and having a, a single center. As to the roof, yeah, I, I'll look and see if I have those, because I, I think that was pretty much just dropped after the beginning of the year.
Excellent. And then the Safety Service Director also had concerns about flashings that need to be repaired as well, so that's a separate, would be a separate cost, and they need to be painted to help preserve the lifespan of them. So, yeah, any of these items, too, like, you know, if there's additional questions, I will tell you that Chief Wallace and Assistant Chief McCabe have been very helpful to me and kind of talking to me about some of these things, especially once they've been brought up, so just recommend you reach out to them, or let me know, too, and I will send any additional information that I have to you all. So great, thank you so much.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, the next section here is the parks and playgrounds section. Most of these were submitted by the Safety Service Director. A couple of the ones at the end were just items kind of hopefully for long-range planning, for us to try to start planning and buying new playground equipment and not having to always depend on grants to make that happen. So the first one is immediate need is replacing, the two of these kind of go together, but replacing the lights at all three of the Waterworks baseball fields. So there's quite a few issues right now with the lights, they're expensive to maintain. The newer ones, and with, using LED and other things, are way, they're cheaper to maintain, they last longer, and a lot of the times, they provide a better light for the, the kids that are practicing or playing. And then with that, there's also a master electric light panel at Waterworks that is probably, it's, it's a higher priority than the, the lights at Waterworks, and these are not in any priority order, I just, they're in a more of a random order in each section, so just kind of know that. But the, the light panel at Waterworks is outdated, and it can't, you can't buy some of the equipment or some of the stuff that you need to service it, and apparently, there's some issues with either, I guess, the coaches and other people, that it's hard to turn on or off the lights, and there's, it's just a very big inconvenience right now. The city's kind of jerry-rigged it up, but it's not an ideal situation for them, so the Safety Service Director very much wants to see that done. The stairs at Millcrest Park, or between upper and lower Millcrest Park are an issue as well. Anybody that's been on them recently, or probably been on them in the last 10 years, knows how dangerous the stairs currently are right now, so they're, you know, they're kind of leaning a little bit. It's a wood, it's a wood decking kind of setup, I guess it's all wood-made, all wood-based, probably some concrete core, but I'm not sure, but they're essentially, the wood frames of them is just leaning, and so at some point, it's going to collapse with people, and hopefully not with people on it, but they are going to need to, need to be replaced. So he's got somebody looking into that right now. He gave me a rough estimate that's included on the list, but that will have a more definite number when he gets done. So the next one is kind of an add-in, the Safety Service Director agreed with this, but for Victory Park, there's a lot of, there's quite a few different groups right now that are kind of looking at Victory Park and trying to figure out kind of how we revitalize it. So especially when you look into the building in the back that used to be the safety lane, that there's some opportunities that are going to be kind of coming up hopefully soon to potentially utilize that building or utilize, and/or utilize the pool as a splash pad. And there's also opportunities to kind of reconfigure maybe the back of the park to make it more usable for, like, maybe art, art festivals or other type of things. So there's a group, the Quality of Life Group Planning Committee, they have come up with some ideas themselves as well, and so essentially, for 2021, I, we decided just to put some money in there as a placeholder that could be changed, but let, you know, the next mayor and the, those, some of those key stakeholders at the park that kind of are working to kind of revitalize that area, give them a chance to maybe use that as matching funds, or use that to really make a difference, because I think right now, the park as it stands is not a very honorable way to honor our veterans, because there's a lot of unhonorable activity that happens there. And I do want to, you know, Councilman Thompson, his wife, Toni Cook, I mean, they've done some great work with trying to bring attention to it, and other people have, too. There's been events and stuff that have been hosted there, but I think there's more that can be done to truly make that park what it should be. And so that's just there, it doesn't have to be there, but I think it would be a good idea to set it aside and earmark it so that some positive things, like the splash pad, could happen at some point. The Safety Service Director also talked, the shelter houses at Finnwick, Upper Millcrest and Lower Millcrest, all need new roofs, it's about $10,000 per roof to get it done, could be slightly less, but we just had a placeholder there for 2020 for the roofs. The restroom at Burrwood needs a roof replaced. The next item is an item that's been passionate to Councilmember Thompson, and something that a lot of people kind of want to see, and that's basketball goals back at Waterworks Park. And so, you know, if there's not grant money that's available to make that happen, I think that we should consider allocating and budgeting and spending money to, to put the parks there, and then with that also tie in, install cameras as well that can be viewed by the dispatch center or have a recording, you know, of the activities going on, so if there is vandalism, then we can see that.
I would like to add to that. I think cameras are, and are absolutely needed at several of the parks. We have so many parks that are just plain, I mean, they're just secluded, and you can't see them from the streets, the houses around them, the brush is up, and I actually think that could even be a high priority. But I, you know, so a lot of these parks, I can't see, a lot of parents just letting their kids go to the park. I actually, you know, I've with the Adopta Park, and I'm on that committee, and I've walked around a lot of these parks, and it is actually, you're walking through them, you're the only one in there, and it's secluded, and it's really, it can be uncomfortable. And I think cameras should be at all the parks, not just Waterworks.
Yeah, I think that's a great call-out. You're obviously out of line while I'm talking.
At one time, there were, you know, and then the maintenance, the monthly fees got to be crazy, so, but technology's changed a lot now, so.
Yeah, I'll work to see what, I don't know if the police department has some experience with how that might work, or the Safety Service Director, but I'll look to see if we can maybe get some kind of a number that we can plug in there to help it happen.
Thank you.
No, thank you. Okay, the next item is something that Jenny Wallace called out that was just an opportunity that the city of Norwood's kind of been missing, and so I just put it for 2022 and 2023. There's apparently grants with the state of Ohio called Nature Works, and we've gotten some in the past.
It's how lower, lower Millcrest was done, down by the soccer field, all those, the playground equipment and the shelter house down at lower, lower Millcrest, and the road going back, were all done through Nature Works grants.
Yeah, so in the past, I mean, so we haven't been able to do that recently, because the city's had no matching funds, and so I just put it in there as like an item for us to consider. We can definitely either add funds earlier or add more or less, but just wanted to make you all aware that, that was an opportunity that the city was missing, is getting some of those Nature Works grants. And then this next item, just new playground equipment in general, so I just put some money in there for 2023. We probably need money earlier, frankly, and more often, it was just a placeholder to try to, to bring the conversation up to you all to see what you all thought. But, you know, we can't, we're not going to be able to reply, especially when our president council is no longer president of council, we're not going to be able to, we probably won't have as many opportunities to get some of the grants, especially through Children's Hospital that President Council's been so gracious to facilitate, and so, you know, this, in, in general, cities need to pay for playground equipment, I mean, that's like, that's part of the services that the city provides, and so we can't depend always on grants, so I put money in there for 2023, but if you all would like, I can, you know, maybe add some of that earlier as well, so.
Split it in half, and put half in 2021, and?
Okay.
So I think what probably needs to be done is, with a lot of these things, is establishing a routine maintenance and replacement kind of a thing, so. When chains get rusty, you know, on the swing sets, they get replaced, we don't have to wait for them to do that, we're just doing them every three years or something.
Yeah, no. And I should have mentioned, and I apologize for not mentioning, but the, the same thing with the Victory Park overhaul as well, you know, I mean, I'd mentioned the other groups, I'd mentioned a, a new city administration that can help decide, but then the Parks Committee as well, whoever's the chair of that, whether that be you or somebody else in the future, you know, they would, they can have influence as well on this, especially when they know that the, the money is, if we're planning on the money being there in 2021 and 2023, they can already start planning now for that, so. Cool, excellent, that's a good idea, thank you for that. The last, this bleachers at Waterworks Park, I, I am actually not super familiar, I've had a couple of parents of not whole people reach out about this, but Jenny Wallace is looking into this for me right now about just the condition of the bleachers. If you all have any knowledge right now, I mean, feel free to share it, but potentially, we might sometime in the next five years need to put money in for that, so I just put that as a placeholder.
I think it's Waterworks Four. It's a mess. They're wooden, I think probably, I don't know, Joe did, Public Works build those? They almost look like Public Works built them, built them. They're like down in the hill.
Kind of in the hillside?
Yeah.
Weird.
Do you know, like, right next to where the, the schools have their
Maintenance building there.
The maintenance building?
Yeah.
It's down in the hill, down in there, and so the bleachers sit, they were kind of built into the, into the hillside going down, and they were, they're just made out of wood, they're like pressure-treated lumber, and it, they're all falling apart. They were falling apart when my son played baseball there, four, four years ago. So they definitely need to be replaced.
Okay, excellent. So when we get some, a cost estimate then of that, so do you think that's, that's not a low priority, do you think that's a higher than a low, like a medium, or?
It's a medium priority.
Okay, great, I can change that there. Are there any other mediums or lows here that should be high priorities on the list?
I have a question. Is there a, this, this has to do with what you just asked, so the matching funds for the Nature Works grants, it got me thinking about other opportunities that might require matching funds. Is it appropriate to Is it appropriate to think more broadly about just having a pool of matching funds? And what I'm thinking about is various grants have different timelines where we might need to have that match in place. I don't know anything about that particular grant, like if it's non-compete, does it have a cycle, et cetera? And so I'm wondering if in terms of, does it need to be a high? Do we need to create that pool first so that we can then apply in one of the subsequent years? I think that's information we might need to evaluate, does it need to change?
Well, no, that I think it is incredible to me that, that somebody could apply for a grant. There seems to be a way, it seems to me that there should be a, some kind of a policy about applying for grants that if you, if I decide, oh, I'm going to write, I'm going to write a grant and I get awarded this grant, but I haven't told anybody in the city that I'm writing this grant and that it might need a matching fund, then I've kind of, I might have been committing the city to money that isn't appropriated. So, you know, initially, I think we ought to have some kind of a, that it has to be clear. It would be great to have a pot of money, but you know, in order to clear it with someone in the city that you're writing the grant and what the potential could be to get, I guess, permission, if you will, or to get some kind of a, you know, assurance that the funds, the matching funds, if you get it, would potentially be there. We have gotten grants in the past where we didn't know that reportedly, folks didn't know that, that we needed to appropriate money for it. It's happened in the past, so.
I like your term reportedly, but. So, and that might be something too, like if we do want to set money aside for that, I don't know exactly how much, so it might be something to talk about.
And Nature Works grants come about every year. There are a couple of times a year, they're through the Ohio Department of Natural Resources, so there are rotating deadlines for those.
So if, yeah, thank you. And if, so if we do want to do one, like set aside, maybe not specifically name out that grant, but just matching funds for grants, we could also maybe put a restriction on it that, you know, the Parks Committee just needs, the Parking Rec Committee just needs to reach out to them and okay it or something like that so that we can make sure that council has some involvement on what we're applying for and what, what's happening. So I'll work on looking into that, about, I'll talk to April and Annemarie about how we could do that, so I think it's a good suggestion. This next one, I think we talked, yeah, new playground equipment, oh yeah, cameras, this is the one that we just added. So would you all consider that a high priority, getting cameras at parks or a medium or?
I would say the basketball goals and that would be medium and the cameras, this is my opinion, high.
We're working on getting that done through grants and.
Fire Department.
And police and fire.
Oh, interesting, yeah, so.
I don't know that anybody's told you that they were going to approach you guys or not, but Ron Murphy was going to approach you guys.
Okay.
I think the cameras are, well, I think the cameras are, it's up to every, you know, I do, I just think the cameras in all the parks.
Right.
Are a higher priority, so personal opinion.
Oh, I saw.
For safety.
So is, is line 55 the replacement of the hoop goals being broken out from cameras? Or is that one item, that the cameras at Waterworks and, and the basketball goals there?
I think if we do the basketball goals, we need, like if they're paid, if we pay for the basketball goals, they need to be paid, we need to have cameras as well for them.
Right.
And it could be that if there's donations for the basketball goals, maybe the city picks up the tab for the cameras to like, to help protect them, you know?
So I guess I'm trying to just.
Right now they're together because.
Yeah, I like the idea of them being together. I guess I just wanted to clarify, that's just specific to the Waterworks Park versus the line 59 is all parks.
Well, I would say that it's even more specific probably to the basketball court area for the cost of those cameras there. That probably wouldn't cover cameras for all the, like everywhere at the Waterworks Park.
Okay.
But as Ms. Henry was saying, cameras should be a priority on all our city-owned properties, not just the parks. To protect from mortar-ing and people hanging around and I think they would be a priority for all city-owned property and surrounding areas really.
Okay, are there any other questions about the, or anything that's missing on the parks and playgrounds, anything that we know of right now? I mean, this is the first time that we're all really.
But I mean, on the committee, we haven't thought about things in terms of a capital improvement structure either. We've been focusing on how to get things done without actually having money.
Exactly.
So this will give us a new way to look at things and I'm sure we'll have some additions or revisions in the future.
No, that's perfect. And, you know, I, and the opposite for me, you know, I'm looking at this just from an overall finance perspective, but I, you know, don't have these, I'm not looking at this as much as you are when it comes to the condition of the parks, so happy to, I'm looking forward to hearing feedback that your committee has on that.
I'm just excited to see stuff.
Yes. So the next section is for City Garage, Superintendent Public Works. These are just items that requested by the current, the Safety Service Director. So we need a new dump truck, like a large dump truck. We did get a medium-sized dump truck, but they, they do have a need for a large dump truck, especially for salting operations. It would benefit the city quite a bit to have and so they, and they need to replace the current one. Like as Councilmember Hanahan, who was down there at Public Works not too long ago said, I mean, there's trucks where there's stuffing, Kroger bags on the seats essentially and then taping it up to provide some cushion where things have just worn out because these trucks are so, are used so often, so. But have that set for 2020. The Safety Service Director was fine with that. He said that was not as big of a priority as the next one, which is the backhoe. The backhoe is, it's used by the water department, but it's used also by other areas in the city as well. The number that was provided, 70,000 to get that. This next item is one that's very near and dear to me because of the grass that was really long this last year. And there were times that we had like extremely long grass in some of the parks and there was a guy in a street cleaner going down my street. And I was like, called Joe and was like, what's going on here? Like we, why is this guy not mowing grass right now? Why is he in a street cleaner? Like the health department needs to be mowed, the police station needs to be mowed, you know? And he essentially told me that the, the constraint was not the personnel for that specific task, it was the equipment. They didn't have enough lawn mowing equipment that worked to be able to do it. And so this is essentially, I have purchased lawn mowing equipment. It really should be replaced slash repair lawn mowing equipment. But they, they need to, they don't have the equipment they need to keep up with the parks when there are peak times where they could flex people into mowing that maybe don't mow on a everyday basis, especially when you get a whole bunch of rain and then maybe a few dry days and then you have more rain coming. You want to get to all the stuff during those days and you want to be able to flex them in. So that's why that is there, but he definitely agreed with that. The street sweeper, this is like, this is a low to medium priority. The current one works fine for now, but it is somewhat aging. So by 2023, he thinks that we need to get a new one. The utility truck, the current one that's being used is 24 years old. He imagines that we're going to need a new one at some point in the next few years. And then this last item here, upgrading of traffic signals. So essentially, pretty much all the signals in the city are decades and decades and decades old. And like there's times where, you know, we want to, there's things that happen where we want to be able to maybe add like newer light heads, like walk signals to some of the signals for the students or even add walk signals, like to the one at Allison and Sherman, you can't even add walk signals to that, that one because it's so old. So essentially, this plan right now is putting $20,000 a year for light signals. I think it's something that's just needed. And even if we wanted to, like, I mean, for everybody that lives at Floral, Smith, you know, everybody knows that Floral, Smith, Robertson, and then Forest, Leslie, Smith, those two intersections are terrible. The three-way, both of the three-way intersections right near Sharpsburg. You know, if you're trying to get from Kroger to Rookwood, I mean, I personally hate driving down Smith because you could get stopped at both traffic lights, you know? Like there, there's no syncing, there's no whatever. And so just in general, we just need to invest in our infrastructure and make sure that we're upgrading it. And if, if I'm the only one, that's fine, but I don't believe I am, so. I know this is happening in the, in the council chambers right now, but it's an important, I think it's an important thing that Safety Service Director agrees that we've got to start modernizing some of our infrastructure.
With the trucks, I don't see any replacement here for the pickup trucks.
Gotcha.
I don't, I don't, and those were the ones with the duct tape and the seats filled with Kroger bags. I can't imagine those are going to last another five years. And I don't even know how many we have down there in that condition or how many we even have on, on the road.
Yeah, I'll talk to, the Safety Service Director did not bring this up when we talked about it, but I will ask him to see what his thoughts are on that, just to make sure that we try to get that in their plan, so. Thank you for bringing that up.
I do have one more question in this area, the upgrade of the traffic signals. Is the 20,000 based on a quote?
It is not. It's just based, well, it's based on past cost of having to replace the traffic signal, like to replace the system, so.
And does that include the pedestrian lock sign, light?
I'm not certain.
Okay, so I don't, I think the priority medium sounds good, but I'd want to see that cost be equitable, like if we're updating the light, we're updating the signals all in one swoop, like one entire intersection at a time. That's my only feedback on that, because I really, really want to be able to push a button at Allison and Sherman.
Some of those ped lights are still to be replaced by the Safe Route to School grant. Yeah, I know.
I don't think that intersection is one though.
Please?
I don't think that intersection is one though.
Which one?
Allison and Sherman because of it being so old.
That was the one we did not get.
Yes, that is the one I really want to see. We have enough money to do that intersection all at once.
I still haven't given up on that one.
Yeah, okay.
Work can reapply.
In the last, because, and actually, yeah, that one definitely needs attention. But yeah, there's money in here and this may change to like, maybe the Safety Service Director might come back and say there's maybe do it every other year and do more in one year because of the cost. I'm not sure. It's just an estimate that he gave me for a need that the city has.
Just to clarify, whether we do five intersections or one, I just think we should have the amount needed to do the entire intersection.
Oh, agree, for sure.
So if it's only one, let's just do the whole thing.
Gotcha, excellent. Okay, the next one here, so this, I talked to April and Annemarie about this. Essentially, we're going to get down to the street fund in a minute and talk about some of the potential streets that could be done. But, you know, just talk, it's not the money that's in the street fund, so I think we're going to be able to do 500 to $550,000 a year, some starting this year, but next year really accelerating. It's still not going to be enough though to truly get the city on a proper maintenance schedule. And so I just put in here for starting in 2020 to start transferring from the general fund. I thought that we could do it to the street fund, but essentially what will happen is there'll need to be a new capital projects fund created and that's legal and it can be created, it's a legal fund, but that we can start putting money in and then we'll pay for capital projects out of that fund. And so I just put in here for $150,000 a year of the general fund, starting in 2020, to go to streets. So that just provides, over that four-year period from 2020 to 2023, that's, would be an extra 600,000 boost for streets. So, you know, to me, it's one of the highest priorities on the list, but is ensuring that we get these streets done. So it's in there, depending on what actually ends up happening, especially with union negotiations. I mean, a lot of this stuff can be in jeopardy if we get negative findings from arbitrators and mediators for union stuff and we're forced to spend more money in specific departments. So just know that as well, that even, and even stuff in those departments could be in jeopardy if we have to now spend more money because an arbitrator mediator is giving everything that's wanted by a bargaining unit, so. But, you know, this is, the goal is to have this and, you know, I think we all know that we want to have money put in the streets and other things, so I think we'll keep driving forward, but just wanted to make that caveat. Okay, the next department that has items is public lands and buildings. This one, highest priority is a new, for a new city website. I don't actually know how much this would cost. I put 15,000 as an estimate to hire somebody to do it. And then in our operating budget, we can just have some make, like actual, you know, maintenance costs to keep it maintained, but I have that in there, yes.
Thank you. So we did have a presentation from a provider who, I think it was, I think the company is TownLink, if I remember correctly, that could do website and an app. It was less than 15,000, but what I wanted to ask is, is this the part of the plan where we need to consider how we respond to public records requests and actual email infrastructure for council as well? I know we talked about putting that into a plan. I'm not sure if that needed to go into the improvement plan or the actual recovery plan.
That's a good question. So that's being worked on by TA Brown. It's actually going to be in kind of in our operating plan, but to have our emails transferred to a city, either a city server or a server by our IT consultant where it's, because right now currently the city emails for most of the departments, not for, I think, police and fire, but most departments, the, it's a Cincinnati Bell email address and it's not, I don't think we even pay for it, but it's not supported anymore. So if a council member for all of a sudden, you know, is not a council member anymore, there's nothing really the city can do to compel that person to, you know, release any of those records because they are in complete and control that account. The city has no access to that account externally. A court subpoena essentially would be the only way that I guess that could get, had. The goal is to have an email server where is, even a city administrator has access to backups and that we could get to that stuff so that we're all, it just provides an extra level of transparency. So that's going to be done outside. There's going to be a per month, a per user, per month cost to that and that'll be budgeted in the operating budget for the city to pay for that.
Is that something we're considering for 2020 to put in? I don't believe that was part 2019. If it is, I just need a reminder.
It's not in the fiscal recovery plan right now, but it, that'll, that's an item, that's a priority item for the city. And so I imagine that that will be in the mayor's proposal when we review it.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So I talked to, you know, I've heard conflicting numbers on the next item, City Hall's roof system. I've heard numbers that are in the hundreds of thousands, but I talked to Director Gears about the need to replace the roof here at City Hall, because there's leaks quite a few places. It's a very big priority. You know, he gave me a number of 100,000, so I'll leave that in there for now. I think he's working, I think he's working on getting a better estimate for that so that we'll have it for planning purposes. The next item he thought was a, just an, something needs to be done, not necessarily like a massive priority, but it's just replacing windows at City Hall. However, we wouldn't want to do all the windows all at once. We'd want to kind of do them in phases. And so essentially, he wanted to see 40,000 put in for windows throughout the period, the five-year period. The next one, so there's a water damaged floor in council chambers due to a water, a roof, I think it's due to a roof leak. And so there's a cost to repair that and we don't know what the exact cost will be. I mean, that'll be worked, they'll get a quote to work on it, but there's money budgeted in there for that. The community center, there's money, there's just some windows that need to be replaced. It was not like a super high priority because there's, I'm hoping at some point, there's a hope that we have a new community center, a new recreation center at some point that we could have, but, so I didn't want to necessarily put too much money into replacing those now or just suggest that, but we can just, you know, if there's concerns or a need to want to do that earlier, that's fine, but the Safety Service Director just thought we might be able to set some money aside so that they can start repairing some of those windows.
This is point clarity, the hope around a new center, I hadn't heard that, is the thought of renovation or a new building?
I think it depends on kind of who wants, who picks, ends up picking that up. I mean, it's, I don't, I, I mean, my thought would be a brand-new building. I think that it just needs, personally needs to be, but it's a, something that likely would have to be done through a levy with the voters at some point. So it's not something I'm specifically, it's not something anybody's working on, but it would be something that I hope somebody in the next, you know, this number of years does decide to pick up and decide to, I shouldn't have that vision.
It would be nice to have a new building. I just hadn't heard that, so it's nice to start dreaming about that.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. And then the AC system here in council chambers, I mean, we all know, like in the summertime that.
People will hear what we're saying.
Yes. If you're, if you're here watching, if you're here in person watching the council meeting, for about a third of the meeting, you don't hear anything because the thing keeps, the AC will cycle. keeps, the AC will cycle on and off, and there's actually blowers or something somewhere in the, essentially, it's very loud in here. And just the system in general will need to be replaced at some point. So it's on there for 2023. So any other questions about that department? Okay, next department is the Health Department, so all three of their areas. And this is one where there actually might be a change, because Donna Lake has some new information for us.
Yeah, I spoke to Jean Tolberg today on another matter, and we were talking about the meeting tonight, and when I told her that, you know, we were looking at the truck for the health inspector and then car for nurses, she suggested, they suggested that it might be better to look, as opposed to like a truck or cars, that it might be better just to get small SUVs that could be used by anybody, so it wouldn't have to be a truck by, by an inspector or a health inspector or the environmental director. It could be used by anybody, just small SUVs, that they would get, you know, a little more use out of them as opposed to a truck and car, so.
Yeah, so for this one, then, I'll, I'm guessing we'll change it so that we get one of those in 2019, and maybe one in 2021, or something like that. Do you have a suggestion on that?
I don't know if you can get, I don't know how much small SUVs are. Get them off the state bid.
Are you thinking just getting both at the same time and have them?
I don't know. I mean, I don't know. I think we need to look, maybe ask Mr. Gears if he can get an estimate of what they are. They may, they may be the same.
You're not going to get a small SUV for 20,000?
No.
I don't think so.
Okay, you can look at it.
So, I mean, we can change the amount, too. I mean, if that's the need. Health Department, actually, Health Departments, they cover, I mean, other than the Building Department, they're, they cover more, quite a bit of their own costs through some of it through grants, but also, I think we get around $50,000 a year just from birth certificate requests.
Yep.
And so the auditor actually created a website. I don't, I haven't seen it. I've been told they created a website that drives traffic to our Health Departments. I think we're one of three Health Departments in the county, or at least four.
Cincinnati and Hamilton County, Norwood, and Springdale. And I think Norwood is cheaper, and you don't have to pay for parking, and you can get in and out in five minutes. And so there's not a day that goes by. They average like 30 birth certificates a day. And when the state finally digitizes death certificates, they'll probably, you're probably going to need to hire somebody that's going to be just doing vital statistics.
It's a good revenue source for the city.
Yeah, it's a very good revenue source. I get to keep up a portion of the funds. The state gets the vast majority of it, but they do get to keep a certain amount with each birth certificate.
Yes, yes, something, so the Health Department essentially, I mean, I think it'd be, and I don't even think they use the cars that they have right now because of worries of breakdowns.
Yeah, they don't, yeah, they won't drive them.
So we can look into potentially, yeah, changing those.
So I sympathize with other departments, like police departments, they always, they want their cars, usually the cars that they get, the Health Department get or they hand me down, police crews. I think there may be one vehicle, a truck and one car that was purchased early in the Hochbine administration, so I don't know when that was, but probably 24 years old, the same as Public Works.
Excellent. So the computer, well, see, again, this is another one that there's, specifically, there was a computer that was requested, so I put it in here, but I just need to, we need to, I'll talk to April and Anna Mary about whether we should have computers called out in every department, or not call computers out at all, just to make it consistent. So the last thing here, renovation of Health Department buildings. So this is one that the Safety Service Director kind of recommended that we probably plan for, that just having the facility, like the mechanical equipment and/or other items that need to be done there to set money aside for, long-term for that. So I put, I put it in 2023, some money aside for that, just with that request. That's so long out that it's likely that we'll be, by the time we get to that point, it'll be changed, or could be grown or stronger, what have you, but at least it's potentially, it could be there as a placeholder if we decide to leave it there, to get some of that done. Okay. The next section, Recreation. So this section, this one here, the first item, I think we all know is a huge, or most of us probably know it's a huge issue that have parents that, parents of kids that call us. The gym floor in the gym at the rec center is very unsafe. And so essentially, there's the referees or parents have to go and like nail down some of the nails that come up during games, and some of the things won't even nail down. So the kids are like trying to kind of go, sometimes play around a nail that's sticking up out of the ground on the floor. And so anyways, we, the floor just needs to be replaced, and so the backboards do as well. So this was a high priority from the administration, but also just something I thought might be a high priority from the standpoint of safety for the kids. So the cost of doing that, there's 34,000. I will note that that 34,000 would pay for not, it would not be a wood floor that would be replaced, it'd be a rubberized floor. So there's like quite a few gyms that are using, or places using rubberized floor, and the rubberized floor does have, it's durable. I'm told it has some warranties as well on it for use so that if there were any damage, you know, a lot of that stuff can be fixed. So it's something that, I guess, I think it's a big priority, and I know that, you know, Jenny Wallace, the Recreation Director, that's something that she really wanted to see done. The next four items were at the pool, just items that need to be purchased, and I specifically called them out to make sure that they actually do get purchased because they are like necessary for what they do. So there hasn't been any like new lounge and yard chairs purchased in quite a while. And so they're really, they, they do a good job trying to take care of them, but they just need to have some replaced. And so there's funds called out for that. I forgot exactly how much she said they were each, but that the 5,000 in 2019 would be enough to cover what they need. This lifeguard chair at the pool, so this one, they need because, well, there's two things. One, they have, they need to replace that current stand that's there. The other stands, I asked, do you have to replace any other stands in this five-year, nope, just that one. I mean, you know, she was very much like, I only need money for that. But this one's actually would be a mobile stand. It wouldn't be one that's drilled into the ground so that they could adjust it based on the demand of the pool and what they need from a lifeguard perspective. It wouldn't be a permanent fixture that couldn't, couldn't be moved. And so that provides a lot of, that provides staffing advantages for the, the pool and how they staff it. So that's one that they really think's a high priority. The umbrellas at the pool, just kind of on sunny days, right now, a lot of the umbrellas they buy are from Big Lots. And so it's, they just break very easily. They really would like to see umbrellas. And then her next thing is the popcorn machine. She really wants, she really needs a popcorn machine. So, I mean, the recreation in general, like between the rec center and the pool, I mean, they are the ones that get the bottom of the barrel of, essentially, of everything. And so it's like, if it was bad enough for them to call this stuff out, I just thought that, like, I think it's really important that we try to make sure that this stuff happens. And then in addition, we need to ensure that there's funding in the rec department's key to actually fund stuff like the popcorn machine, even though it's called out here and it's sad it has to be. You know, there needs to be funding in there to just replace that whenever stuff does come up in the, in the future, in my opinion, so.
I've heard it mentioned before that the roof at the pool needs some repair work done on it as well. I don't know specifically what, but I've heard more than one person say it, so we might want to put that in here.
Yeah, yeah, and I will ask the Safety Service Director, too, but I'll just add a line here so we can ensure that gets done. Yeah, it wasn't brought up, but that's a good point of, yeah. I'm sure we've heard it from the same person in the past. Yep. So the next item, oh, so like, next item, air conditioning is the community center. So there's at least three that are needed right now in rooms at community center that just don't function, including like a storage area, well, there's one that's a storage area that does need some AC because some of the stuff does get damaged in the summer when it gets too hot in that room. The next, so that was a Jenny Wallace request. I mean, not urgent, but just something that she, they could use at the community center, since they don't have central AC there. Are there any questions about the recreation, or anything right now that we know that we should add other than the pool, other than the roof? So the next one is the, this one's just multi-department, because this is the accounting system, the accounting, utility billing, and the payroll system. And this also does purchase orders and does the city treasury stuff as well. So it's like five functions in one. We're currently operating like on a 1995 or 2002 software, and software that the company that we're licensing it from, you know, it's called EGAF, but they don't even really support it anymore. They have a newer system that is more, somewhat more cloud-based, but it also, it upgrades automatically. Like when the, when they upgrade, they send patches down and the whole thing upgrades, so everybody stays on the same system. And so essentially, it's going to be, it's a huge expense, but it's one that the financial supervisors are adamant that we include, and the auditor's offices, and the Safety Service Director has mentioned as well, because the utility billing is very much needed and upgrade to that. There's issues with that. And the auditor's office, there's issues as well with how the funds are set up and how you can track them. So, you know, that's a $170,000 expense, which is painful, but it's a necessary expense for the city. And I did find out with that, if we, well, the actual operating, so we pay like licensing fees or service fees, will they increase when we go to this new system? And they actually will be right about the same. So that essentially, we're not going to be paying any additional or increased operating fees when we go to the system. It's just we have to do the initial upgrade. And that pays for all the transfer of data, which is massive. It pays for the employee training, and then all the, just initial ramp-up servicing. So all of that is included in that fee.
I know that April Davis and them, they're real big on getting this done.
They are adamant.
I know. But since we're looking so far, you know, ahead also, you know, we've got a treasurer's office, and I haven't talked to Tim about this, but I know how old their software is. I know, you know, this is the department that brings in all our money.
And everybody will get it. It's every department will get this.
There could be, there could be a separate program, I think is what she's saying, that is separate from this.
Yeah, it's separate, it would be separate from this. At this point, you know, they input tax returns, 12,000 of them all by hand. They have to put it all in by hand. There's no way for, you know, filing your taxes online. It just seems, it just seems like that is something we ought to at least look into, since they are the department, you know, it's like everything else. They're putting out fires. They're not thinking of the future. They're not, you know, how many, how many returns are they missing? How many people aren't filing? And they don't have the, the time, the staff to go, or the software to go after, you know, these people. I think that that department, it would be, it would be worth looking at, since they are, and I'll say it again, the ones that bring in the money.
Were they asked to submit anything, or?
And did he? I don't-
I haven't talked to him about the capital, the specific capital stuff. He knew, well, I'll work with to talk to him and see if-
Thank you.
Yep, yep.
There may be an add-on to the system that-
Well, when I had talked to Anna Mary about, or April Davis about it, and I, I believe from what she was saying, it would have to be something separate. Also, another question I have, have we looked at outsourcing our payroll system recently? You know, there are so many advances now, and I know that the last time it was looked at, because we have so many contracts, so many this and that, that it was going to be difficult to have that done. But nowadays, especially with Fecor right here, I think technology's gone so far.
I think they were asked, actually. I think there was some discussion with them initially, and what they wanted was for the city to do all the inputs, because they didn't want to maintain all of the contracts. And so everybody, so each department would have to input their own stuff. It's almost like-
But aren't they doing other communities now? Haven't they picked some of that up?
I don't know. I just know that that's what happened a few years ago, when, when there was some discussion with them.
I think it might be something we need to look into.
So I did, yes, it was requested early that if there's capital expenditures, it was requested back in October to get if there's any capital expenditures for 2019, but I'll re-ask the question more in the sense of thinking long-term, how can we improve the system? So, yep, I'll let you all know that I hear back there.
Thank you.
Okay, so the next item is, okay, so before I go to the street fund stuff, I just want to, one, reiterate that the streets that are here are all streets that were, most of these were, these were recommended through the Safety Service Director as like suggested streets, but it doesn't have to be the specific street. So if the street committee wants to go together, if they want to work on trying to hire somebody to do a plan to better do it, that's totally fine. Nothing here is set in stone, but they're just here to kind of like spark our imagination in a sense of like what we could do thanks to the stuff, the work that we've done to try to free up funds in our street fund. So the first one is, and I don't know if this can even be in the street fund or if it has to be in the general fund, but repairing the lights on the Norwood lateral, so that's like huge priority. The cost, I think that Joe gave me is $70,000, so that's what's in here. If it can't be here, then we'll have to move it to the general fund. But I would say that we have to do that in 2019. Like, that's pretty much non-negotiable there. So the next one for 2019 would be repaving Section Avenue. And so there's already, there's work that Joe's doing to get the engineering, but council will have to, I mean, any of these things, too, like council has to approve advertising for bids. So nothing will happen without council's approval when it comes to that as well. But we're working on, the engineering is being worked on, and so at some point, we'll be able to advertise out for bids. The same thing with Indian Mound Avenue, Sheridan Drive, those are two that are pretty urgently needed, and potentially Grand View could potentially be added as a, as a side to that. We had a resident come just recently and talked about that, so that potentially could be added there. So that would be another one that we would probably approve the bid documents this year, but that wouldn't be done until 2020. And so the same thing in potentially Cathedral, Shanmore, and Slane would all be kind of 2020 items. So my hope would be that all the bid documents would be approved this year so that it can be on the books for these construction companies so that it gets done in 2020. Our current street fund, I think we have, and I should have checked right before we got here, but I think we have about a million dollars this year that is, we've appropriated because we had money from last year that we didn't use for streets, because we decided we wanted to save it up instead of rushing into it. And then we've got, we'll have another 500 to 600,000 in the street fund this year. And so there'll be money that we can do. So in 2020, we'll be able to be more aggressive on repaving streets. So just the ones that I have here, again, these are the ones that, you know, the Safety Service Director recommended just based on his experience, but they don't have to, we don't have to necessarily do these. But again, Indian Mound and Sheridan, Cathedral, Shanmore, and Slane Avenue. In 2021, Regent Avenue and Lincoln Avenue. And then essentially, we just stopped putting any at that point. We just earmarked repaving for those future, the last year, two and a half years. So council at that point, or the administration at that point, can potentially make that decision, unless we want to go ahead and plan that out and happy to put all of that in here. I mean, these are just items to kind of help people understand like magnitude of cost, and like what you kind of get for the cost, the reason why the streets are even added in here. But these specific ones were added in here. But it's all, it can all be changed. So feel free to take that up from the streets committee however you'd like there. And then we also would have the, start from 2020 to 2023, we'd also be putting in, over that four-year period, an extra $600,000 to do street repaving over that four-year period we'd be setting aside. So we're really trying to act like a city at this point and get our stuff in order and start paving streets, because we know how much of a party that is. And really, I'll just kind of say, too, you know, as much flack as this council gets and people get at the city get for, you know, things that happen, you know, oh, we don't love our public safety, our police and firefighters, what have you, all this, you know, our goal has been to start repaving streets. And so this is kind of, I'm not going to say reward, but this is like the, this is helping us to see like what, why we're even doing what we're doing. And so, you know, getting the floor at the community center, getting other stuff, the reason why we might even be able to do a lot of this stuff is because we've been tightening our belts and trying to make sure, make sacrifices where we can. So just want to say that, you know, this doesn't just come, it didn't just come out of thin air. This is stuff that we've all worked on for the past couple of years, and, you know, in particular, last year. So just want to let you all know that. I think that that's going to be very appreciated. Are there any questions about kind of what's shown here on the street fund item?
Not a question, but just a comment. It seems like it's obvious that there is a need, and these are being selected because there are no need. I think that the idea around having a plan, maybe even doing a study, would help all residents just be aware of how are we prioritizing. I think all of this is great, the whole capital improvement plan. But I think the more we can be sharing how things get prioritized, that could be helpful, especially as people are thinking about moving into the city. You know, are we, am I moving in at its time when that street's about to get done, or am I moving- am I moving in once it just gets done? I just think the more we can notice kind of the rationale behind the selection, obviously all of them a high priority, that would be helpful.
Yeah, I think we, we started this a little bit last year in the Streets Committee, but we're going to continue this year, is we wanted to hire somebody to do an audit of our streets currently, to kind of assess, you know, give them a grade and say, you know, these are your priorities, these are the ones that are so bad you have to have grants for, like forests, and these are the ones that you need to take care of before they get like forest and things like that. So it's something, you know, it's, we want to do that this year, so.
That's right.
And I think that'll, this is a good start, we'll just, what gets done, anything that gets done, we'll just help inform it in the future.
Yeah, that's great. Okay, and so the last item, I mean, just for the water, Joe had reached out about the wanting a car or truck for the meter reader, the water department, so he just asked me to put $20,000 there. It was just recommended that it go into the water fund since that's a complete water item.
Can it come out of the sewer fund? I don't know, they have a different funds.
If it would, if it can come out of the sewer fund, that would be awesome, but I, everything I've been told, I don't think it can, but I'll definitely ask, I'm happy to-
Because it, because it's-
Yeah, no, it's-
Out of what fund?
Sewer.
Sewer fund.
I asked the same question.
Okay.
I think they're looking into it.
Yeah, there is good news about the sewer fund, so for the past two years now, or at least from last year, we started, we have about $100,000 less in the sewer fund than we started with last year. In previous years, it had been going up like $300,000 per year, and like, you know, I've been asking Joe, I think Donna's been asking Joe, Joe's been talking to MSD, like, they can't figure out what the issue was. I know there's, George Schneider talks about this a lot, and I appreciate that he brings awareness to it because it is an issue, but it has been an issue, it's like, I told him that we would, Finance Committee would make sure we're watching it, we did watch it last year, and it didn't seem to keep going up, so we'll keep watching it this year, potentially whatever the issue was, was fixed some, you know, two or three years ago that was causing it, I'm not sure, but we still have the $3 million in the sewer fund that we don't know what we can do with at this point.
State auditors are looking at it, there's, there was some concern as to whether or not, like, we get a percentage as an administration fee for collecting water and sewage fees, and so there was some question as to, like, the water fund was in the negative and the sewer fund was, had all this extra, so there was a, one of the questions I raised was, is it a possibility that you're putting all of the administration fees into the sewer fund and not breaking them out accordingly, like, should some of it be going into the water fund? So I think the state auditors are looking at, they're going back and looking at that just to see where all the, where the discrepancies are.
Yep, and Anna Mary did say, asked her about the water fund, too, that we, Anna Mary is one of the financial supervisors for the city, they are going to start next week looking at the water fund and the sewer fund, just the utility billing in general to see, do a deeper dive into that to see what's, what's going on and make sure that residents are, make sure that residents can feel comfortable with the fairness of how the billing's happening.
But I want to point out, too, that we, we get billed monthly on water bills and sewer bills now, but we only bill our residents every three months, so there was, at least in the water fund, I'm not sure if MSD bills us every month or not, but there was a possibility that some of that shortage in the water fund could be because of billing cycles, because people use water before they pay for it. And then, so they use it three months, and then we read it, and then you send a bill, and so it's almost four months from the time that they started using the water that we're paying bills for three months before we get the money from the residents. So looking at timing and all that in the water fund, too.
Excellent. So that's the, I know we've been here for a while, but that is the-
And how many millions of dollars is this?
Oh, yeah, so the total at the bottom here, or, so for each fund, and actually, because we changed some totals, I don't know, I want to recheck the formulas before saying it, but essentially, I mean, this is a $5 million, for the general fund, a $5 million capital improvement plan. So we're actually looking, this is the first time in many, I don't know if you've been on President Council, if it's ever happened, but this is the first time, and the state's encouraged it, but that we've been trying to look at planning our capital expenditures over a five-year period. So this thing is not perfect, even probably the totals in here, I mean, I'm sure I'm going to see something online, like, oh my gosh, they said that costs $30,000, when that shit only costs $20. It, it's not perfect, it's just literally a discussion draft to get the conversation started, and, you know, this is not committing us to spending this, any amount of money anywhere necessarily, it's more of us to try to be thinking about what we're going to need at the city as we move forward. So, is there anything else?
Just one point of clarity, the upgraded software we talked about earlier under the multi-department, that includes the water department?
Yes, yep, the utility billing.
Thanks.
I'd just like to say, Mr. Boneswell, you did a great job on this.
Yes, you did. You spent a lot of time.
Here, here.
Thank you.
So from here, you're wanting suggestions from folks if they're, I mean, we kind of went through them, so this is our first look at it, so I guess it takes the time to absorb. Call you or with suggestions or email, or how do you want to proceed?
Yeah, so I'd imagine that we would definitely, feel free to reach out to me, call me, and residents, too, like, any suggestions I get from residents, if they give me, you know, are all forwarded on, so just residents, if you want to reach out to me, let me know things that you want to see, all forwarded on to the rest of council, so everybody knows what has been sent to me. But essentially, I'd like to have, I mean, I'd really like to discuss it all in public, so I'd like to have the committee, the whole of us meet in potentially some, two weeks or so, about, yeah, I'd say in about two weeks, and we can then look, I'm going to meet with the auditors of state and kind of review this along with what they're working on, kind of their own projections of how much we might be able to spend as well, and we don't know if it's going to match up with how much that we're proposing to spend, but I hope, I hope it does, but I know that there's a lot of need, so we're going to hope that we are able to, to get most of the stuff done. But anyways, we'll know then, once I know from them about where we're kind of at, it'll also help to inform if there's other things that we might need to add to this as well. We try to be as, I mean, most of the stuff on here, again, most of it's higher medium, so we try to be as conservative as possible, but I know that there was things that were missed, so I'm sure that we're going to have to come back and add things to it, but I'd say we'd meet again here in two weeks and do kind of the same thing, I won't go through necessarily every item, I'll just go through all the changes, or any suggested changes that we have, and then you all can also bring changes as well. And if you're, any individual committee wants to meet as well in the meantime to talk about it, so I think you've got streets and parks, right?
I don't have anything scheduled.
But, well, I just meant that you have like the committee, so if you all wanted to meet, and then Marilyn, I think you have public safety, is that correct? So if you all wanted to meet as well to kind of talk about it, I'd be happy to come as a, as a guest and provide any details I can, and we'd also invite the relevant people to come, so, or you all can invite the relevant people if you all like, so. Happy to help any way there to get the word out or help to change the plan how we need to. Okay, Donna, I do not have anything else?
Okay. Any other questions or comments? I know it's gone on a long time, but good work. All right, if there's nothing else, I will call the committee of the whole to an end, and we'll adjourn, and I do have the committee of the whole report if you all stay and sign it, so we can report it out at the next committee meeting, or council meeting. Thank you.